Six thirty, we'll call the meeting to order. Certified compliance with the open records law?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
House number.
Here.
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 House number.
Here. Next one, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
No.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is adopted. Next, we're moving on to public comments. If anybody has any public comments, please identify yourself for the record. I believe we do have some folks that would like to make some comments doing that. So we'll start right back here.
So I have brought a couple of people with me today. We are talking about potentially bringing the dog park to the city of Duran. I have two locations, I have maps, they want to see them. Not sure how far in depth you want me to go here today. I have a presentation, it's pretty formal, but we've been in contact with the Duran Improvement Group about potentially adopting us as under the 501(c)(3) for fundraising. And then there's a couple of locations, like I said, one of them being here in the city of Duran that would, I think in the land records, it does say that it needs to be used as a park someday. It's about four acres, a little over four acres, but not sure how far in depth.
Well, why don't you go ahead? If you have something you want to hand out, that's fine. As this meeting goes along, a little bit later, we have about three different city committees that need to meet.
Yep.
And we were going to wait till this meeting and we'll be discussing a time for each one of them. I'm hoping everyone can meet probably before the end of the month or so, or into the first week or so of February.
Okay.
And that's one of them. And we're planning on having, usually our public welfare committee takes care of park issues, so we're going to have a combined meeting of our public welfare committee and our parks committee. Because they also have another subject, item to discuss too. So this would be the other thing to move forward with. So I guess unless anybody from the council has any questions, that would be fine. If you have something you would, and the other thing too is if you want to hand it out tonight, that's fine, or put together packets for the council.
Yeah.
That's fine. And then as far as what the committee tried to plan on, what you need to present to them.
Okay.
And you can work that out with the city administrator. He's not here tonight, but be able to work it out with Scott.
If you have a map or something, or locations, I would like to see it.
Yep.
If you have one.
Just these two you want, you know, or after?
Either way.
Do you have just one set? We can make copies for everybody then.
Sure, yeah.
And to do that, so.
Any questions?
Any other questions? So again, what we will do is once we get the committee together and a date, and then I'll make sure that the, I know you've already had some contact with the city administrator and about setting up an opportunity to come to that meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay? And by the way, just for the record, did you build the name?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I should know it.
Leona Bender, yep, sorry.
Thank you.
Just for the record, make sure we get that. Okay? Anybody else have any public comments?
Me first, okay. I guess Evan Mercer, president of the Pepin County ATV Club, would like to address the counties, the county made amendments to their ordinance, so we'd like to make amendments to yours to match that. Also, we have the issue of the bridge, and we have ways to, a process in the works of resolving the length of the bridge, and then also our mapping. So I guess I don't know how far in depth you want to go tonight with that. So it's a couple of things that we need to discuss.
So were you looking at, as far as the ordinance itself, to make any changes? Have you had the opportunity to speak to the chief of police about this? Come on, sit, just stay in here.
Outdoor meeting last night for the township, so I'm familiar with what he asked.
So you're familiar, okay. Well, okay, that's why we're getting.
I think we could do the same thing with the dog park, have him come to public safety, and I could draft up the changes that he's looking for. We could talk along that public safety, if it'd be like what you would wish.
So on the ordinance, on that part, also the thing about the bridge, now you are, what exactly are you looking for us concerning the bridge? Because we've already gone on record in support of
Absolutely.
use of the bridge for ATVs, UTVs. What else do we need to do?
So basically, what we need, working with WATVA, Wisconsin ATV, UTV Association, we need senators to basically change the law. So they, we talked with Senator Mark Line, and he is, he was a co-author of the bill that restricted the law to 1,000 feet, and this bridge here is 1,601 feet, so we're beyond that, so. And he is willing to alter, or change that, or write another bill to change that. He just would like another, he would like our representative, so that'd be Senator Jeff Smith, to, or WATVA would like the two to get to co-author the bill to change the footage, either to remove it completely or change it to fit our, you know, the needs of the state. So basically, what they would like, what WATVA would like is a letter of recommendation, or a letter request, a formal request to Senator Mark Line and Senator Smith. So that's what we're asking for, that, that, so.
Formal letter from us.
A formal letter from you, addressing them, your letterhead saying that, you know, we see the
Whatever you.
desire for, you know, that it's got a better, yeah, I'm not a.
Since we're already on record that we support the opening of the bridge, does anybody on here object with the city administrator coming up with a letter of that effect? If there's an objection, then we could bring it back for hope, but if everybody here agrees, since we've already gone on record. So what we'll do is, we'll have the city administrator draft a letter. In the meantime, I'll also probably give Senator Smith, probably give him a call tomorrow, or next few days, something to call.
That'd be great.
And mention it to him.
Are we worried, or are we, do we want to just abolish the length period? Do we want to change it just to fit us?
Mark Line's office says they'll get rid of it completely. They want to remove the limit completely.
I'll see if we can help somebody else out by just getting rid of the length altogether, then why make a re-intent to wheel, I guess?
Yeah, so state statutes, we went through the DOT and everything, they won't go beyond that 1,000 foot unless we change the law. So the funny thing is, the municipalities that that bridge stands in is, controls it. So we don't need any DOT, once that number's gone, we don't need any approval from the DOT, or the state, or anything like that. It's you and the county, because you both control the ends of the bridge, so, and probably WATV, but, so. Piece of cake, right?
And it does seem like those other ends, because of the fact, we've always said we felt pretty good about it, because we have a light here at the end. Since we're controlled at this end, any concern at the other end, from the other, either the county, you know, or from the town of WATV concerning that?
I have not approached county yet about this, because we just passed, we just changed the amended ordinance with the county. So I was waiting on those amendments to go through before I approached them with this, so that's the next step, so.
Although the county's not aware of it. So she was sitting there.
Well, I'm sure she's aware.
Of what we're looking at.
But I'm sure knows it already. And the third, I'll probably work with Stan as well, as we had a plan for the mapping of the route through town, and we stuck to a preferred route system, so we'll probably work on that as well. As if we want, we're going to produce another map, so I want it the way you guys are going to want it, so we'll probably work on that, so.
And it wasn't as in public safety we're going to call, but that's probably one of them, we're looking at scheduling one. I'm sure we've always got something for public safety at some point, so. Okay, anything else to add for us?
That's all we got for now.
Okay, any questions from the council concerning, as I said, we'll put that letter together, and obviously, as long as keep on working with the chief, and get the public safety committee as far as changes to the ordinance. Thank you. Okay? Okay, next.
From Gary Sweeney with the American Legion Post 181 here in Duran. The American Legion has requested the council, since 2010, the dedication of the Veterans' Memorial on the Riverfront Park, the Legion has been taking care of the maintenance and the replacement of the flags, the service flags, and the US flag, and the MIA flag. That cost today is $1,000 a year. And the American Legion has a request of the council to consider that they meet us halfway with the replacement of these flags. We go down, maintain them, sometimes we trim off the frayed parts, but it's about once a year we have to change the flags entirely, so. That is our request for you to consider, the Legion.
We'll do, any questions from the council on that? What I'll do is direct that to the finance committee. That's one of the committees that we'll be meeting at some point here, probably in the next two to three weeks. And we will, and we'll put that on the agenda for there, since we're talking about looking at the budget, where we can find that, the possibility of finding that. And so we'll run it through the finance committee, and again, expecting to meet the next two to three weeks.
All right, and then I can coordinate with Scott.
Yeah.
Then I have one other thing, Mayor, on February the 5th, the Duran Swim Club is sponsoring a fund day at Tarrant Park. And we're inviting everyone to come, it's just an appreciation to the community for their support for our pool, which has been wonderful. We're going to run that from 1:00 to 5:00, have some of our organizations there, sheriffs, bar, police, bar, and fire, that type of thing. It's just totally a fun day, bring the kids, we're going to have snow shoeing, sliding, and that type of thing, so.
When do you have to change the flags again, Jerry?
Well, Doug, our finance person down there ordered them already, and it's this year we'll have to change them, so. I mean, we can work this out, Steve, whatever you guys come up with, so.
Any other questions for Gary?
Thank you.
Okay. Again, the floor's still open for anybody else that would like to speak during public comments. Again, if you'd like to speak during the segment, make sure you identify yourself for the record. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, thank you, everybody. Scheduled appearances, as we mentioned before, we were going to schedule this for a couple different meetings, but finally got him here. Scott Tiggen from QuickTrip to give us update on their project. Or we say our project. Department Sergeant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, and members of the council. The mayor introduced me, I'm Scott Tiggen. Worked with the owner of QuickTrip since 1974. QuickTrip started in 1965, I'm just giving you the short version of QuickTrip history, you all heard it once, but I'll try to shorten it up. So in '65, we started when our first store was in Eau Claire. And in '74, when I went to work for the owner and his partner in a different company, but I was doing things on the side for QuickTrip, we had about 25 stores. Three weeks ago, the last week of December, in Holman, we opened store number 800. Being the biggest is not our mission, being the best is. We are ranked number 10 or 11 in the country as far as numbers, we're ranked one or two as far as quality and operational. So we do consider ourselves the best, and our peers consider us one of the best. So anyway, today we have about 450 stores in Wisconsin, 200 or so in Minnesota, 150 in Iowa, and two in Illinois. We're right now buying property in South Dakota, North Dakota, and the UP. We'll build two stores in the UP this year. So I think Duran is going to be store number 840 something. So we're going to build 45 stores this year, new stores, then we'll rebuild nine of our older stores. We're the most vertically integrated commissary company in the world. We have our own dairy plant, our own bakery. Everybody talks about how healthy we all eat, and there's no calories in the circle in the donut. We make $3 million a week, so people still eat the donuts. Make all our own pizzas, our own sandwiches, do all our own trucking, we have our own distribution center, and deliver to every store every day, even to Two Harbors in Minnesota, and we will to Sioux Falls, South Dakota. We have 32,000 coworkers, this is our biggest asset in our company, is our coworkers. Everybody's drug tested when they're hired, they do random drug testing, I get drug tested, the owner gets drug tested. The one thing that makes our company different is we share 40% of the profits across the company with all of the coworkers across the company, so we're one team. It's not one store versus the other, the other. This year, that 40% resulted in a coworker getting a 12% cash bonus based on their W-2 income, and a 5.1% contribution into the retirement plan. So that's what makes us significantly different from our competitors. The Duran project is one of 45 new stores that we're going to build this year. The construction will start on July 11th, provided Matt gets his streets built, and we'll be working together with him. We will be back here to get some easements and that sort of thing approved, to make the streets work, and that you continue to use the street that's on the private property now, and so stay tuned, you're going to have to bear with me one more time. But the dumpster will be picked up at the conclusion of the project on November 30th, and the store will be open the first week of December 2022. That's the schedule for this store. And we very seldom miss our dates. The street work's supposed to start middle of April, correct me if I'm wrong here, Matt?
Correct.
Middle of April, or last half of April, and be done sometime in June. Matt, could you hold that site plan up there? I did a little handout, looks like this, and where I do put the yellow line on there, that's where the new road is going to be located, around the perimeter of the site.
Highway 10, Hardy Street.
Exactly.
Mayor Foods.
And right now, that, when you come into the site, the old street, you take a hard right, and it comes along the other perimeter, so that's going to be totally redone. It's going to be a really nice street and a nice layout. We've got the 9,000-foot store, it's our Gen 3, it's our most current store. If you've been at the new store in Eau Claire, in front of Walmart, or at Sam's Club, it's that whole new concept. Gas pumps in front, 10 pumps, and then three lanes of side diesel on the side there. Five truck parking spots, we've got some trees there to protect Scott Storey's house a little bit, and we'll put a privacy tent in there too, I think. That change in elevation is around 10 or 12 feet from his house down to our parking lot. So we'll have, we'll have anywhere, somewhere between 30 and 35, usually we're on the high side of coworkers in the store. Our payroll should be anywhere from $500,000 to $600,000, could be even $700,000. This is a large store, 24/7, so it'll probably be on the high end of those numbers. I believe we have the store fully staffed at this point, so that we can open it with all three shifts. Because of the COVID over the last couple of years, and the shortage of labor, we have had to close some third shifts in some stores. Sometimes they open back up, and sometimes we're still waiting, but as a rule, we have less people problems than most of our competitors, but it's still affecting us. So that's the short version. Any questions?
Questions from the council?
The demo was supposed to start this week, and I think because of the cold weather we had, they put it off, so I'm sure next week the demo will be in here. Our stores typically take roughly between 140 and 150 days to complete, and that's, we set the schedule, if that's the way it happens.
You said 30 to 35, in the twenties?
Yes. Part-time.
How many, how many part-time, how many full-time, generally?
Generally, anywhere from 50/50 to 60/40, 60 part-time, 40 full-time, never less than 40% full-time. But there's benefits for all. They all share in that 40%, part-time, full-time, all of them.
So they say payroll turns over seven times a year. That's almost $5 million back to them.
We're not going to write all them checks, but I know what you're writing.
Money turns over, turns over, turns over.
They spend it, they spend it, they spend.
Other questions?
I appreciate you letting me have the time to update you.
Not a problem.
I offer all the time to the cities to come if they want an update on the project. Scott is the first one to take me up on it. Most of the time, they've had enough of me by the time.
Since he's on vacation and stuff, he said he'd probably go back and watch it on the WRBN YouTube.
He said he had enough of me. Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you, Scott. Okay, again, we don't have any other scheduled appearances. So move on to the consent agenda. The following matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail, or is a separate item on the regular agenda, may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. We have the minutes from the special city council meeting on December 29th, 2021. We have a bartender's license for Nicole Arnd Morris for the spot bar. Everything is fine.
I'll make a vote, you approve the consent agenda.
Second?
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is approved. Next, move on to administration, mayor's report, just a few things to talk about. I'd like to, again, thank and congratulate Steve Michelson, a city employee, longtime city employee who retired, last day was. Oh, I said Gilbertson, I said Mike. Yeah, sorry. Let me put Steve, I should have, I should put the last name, Steve. Anyway, but a great city employee, and his last day was about Friday.
Yes.
And to do that, and obviously, we're in the process of finding somebody new, and that'll hopefully we'll be able to find another city employee to do that, so. Otherwise, the other thing I was going to talk about was meetings. So we need to get the following committees together. I want, before now, in the end of the meeting, when we talk about future meetings, to give everybody a few heads up, a couple of things that are coming up that are going to conflict with that, Board of Appeals, which really doesn't affect us, because of the fact nobody had councils on Board of Appeals. They are looking to meet on the 17th on a couple of variance requests, coming up on the 19th, which is one week from tonight. We'll be conducting interviews for that open street department, so that's a full night with two members of the council and two members of staff. The one thing about it is that the next city council meeting, we could have one before that on the 26th, one of the committees could meet. We do have a public hearing for the community development block grant, but that's part of the city council meeting. It's an annual meeting, or it's an annual public hearing that we must have for the next one. Just keep those dates in mind. So we're looking at finance, obviously, we've mentioned there's a few things for finance. The big thing, of course, is we're talking about dealing with the changes in the budgeting for the Laneville Street project will be the main thing. Remember, members of finance, the chair is Member Schofield, Member Gillis, and Member Schneider. Also, I would like to see the public welfare committee in conjunction with the public, or the public parks committee get together. Of course, public welfare is chaired by Member Hooker. We got Member Schofield and Member Raceler. Also, because of the fact with economic development, talking about the plans, working with some other entities and getting some professional help in economic development, would like that committee to assemble and talk about future plans. That's chaired by Member Schneider, and then the other two members, and then the Raceler and Member Hartung. And also, it seems like the public safety committee is going to have to get together, of course, with that, as the chair, Gillis, and then Hartung and Schneider on the public safety. But I don't, we don't have to set every meeting tonight, but just everybody thinking about it, and if we can get some of these scheduled, starting with next week and throughout the end of the month, that would be great. Any questions? Hearing none. We didn't move anything off the consent agenda, and the administrator, obviously, Scott's on vacation, but he did give some written notes, everybody had the opportunity to view those, he did send those out. Okay? So next, we move on to public safety, monthly report, Chief Ridgway?
We have the monthly report in front of you, I just have a couple of things. Our Explorers program, we had our second session on Sunday night. Our numbers are down this year compared to years past. Years past, we would be, you know, 16, 17 kids, we only have nine kids this year for our Explorers program, so kind of disappointing, it kind of falls in line with what we're seeing for law enforcement officer recruitment, as adults even. So it's kind of scary that we can't get more than nine kids to come and take a look at some police equipment, and play with our taser, or firearm screens, things like that. So it's kind of disappointing that we only have nine kids in it, but we're having fun with the nine we have. We did some mock crime scenes, some evidence processing in January, sorry, in December. And then this last Sunday, we did a tactical medic came in from the Pierce County, Pierce Pepin County ERU team, showed them some medic stuff, and talked about what his role is on an ERU team. And then we did arrest procedures, where we let the kids work on some handcuffing skills, talked about when we arrest people, when we don't arrest them, so pretty fun session. We were a little light due to some illnesses, but pretty fun session. The only other thing I have is talking about our part-time stuff. We're down to three part-time officers. I am hiring Jacob Linsley, he's a part-timer for Pepin PD and Oseal TV, he'll be starting next week. I've had an ad on WileyNet for just about a week now, and I haven't had any response to it, so we'll see. We've got another week with that ad, and we'll see if we get any applicants for the positions, so. That's all I have there.
Any questions from the chief?
See Channel 13 had a blurb on the news tonight about hiring Eau Claire, can you see it?
No.
Been a lot of openings, with WileyNet when I posted my ad, and it's a lot, a lot of openings locally, so.
Anything else for the police department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the fire department, Chief King?
You guys got the monthly report turning out? Last month, for December, we had 15 calls total, and it was a pretty busy month for us. Other than that, all of our time's been dedicated to the ladder truck, getting everything set and finalized and numbered, and that'll be at the next council meeting. Scott did get the contract wrote up with Rural. Don did have a chance to look over it, and he was very impressed with everything that was going on on that. Other than that, the Rural's meeting is the 18th, it'll be next week, so if you guys, anybody wants to come to that, that's the 18th, at 7, I think it is. At Fire Hall, yep. Other than that, anything else, it's a call. Let's see if we've got questions.
Any questions from the fire department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the ambulance, Director Mill?
Again, your reports should be in front of you, and the only addition I would like to make is to inform you of the total runs for the entire 2021 year. We ended up with 435 total ambulance calls, and that includes transfers, transports also, for 2021, and to give you a comparison, in 2020, there were 382 total calls. September was our lowest run volume month, we had 23, and June was our highest, we had 51. The EMTs on the service, the person with the greatest length of service, is an individual who's been with the ambulance service for 19 years and one month, and the shortest is some of our new hires for two months, so. Today, we've had five ambulance calls already just today, so.
2022?
Correct. Since midnight, there's been five ambulance calls. I believe so. Definitely, we've made every one of them. So 2022 is. So 2022 is starting off on a busy note, but geez. Any questions? Early on the front page, there, we did have a really good, good meeting with the sheriff and Chief Derrick Ray, our Lake and Van, Chief King. That's something I'd like to see us do every year to keep up a good line of communication.
Any questions for the ambulants?
I got one thing to add there. I forgot. We're reconsidering the whistle. I know that's been a lot of concerns in the community, especially in the city. So we're considering shutting down the whistle from 9:00 PM at night till 7:00 in the morning. The only time the whistle will blow at night would be for an actual confirmed structure fire or a severe car accident. I know I've gotten a lot of phone calls, emails, people on the street. So I did meet with the sheriff and Matt Raisler about new protocols with dispatch, getting that siren shut down at night, help some of the concern in the community. So that's something new that's, we just got to finalize and get up to the Sheriff's Department. There was one update, I forgot.
I love storms.
The storm whistle will not change unless to the National Weather Service. So the National Weather Service actually contacts the Sheriff's Department and that has nothing to do with the Fire Department. So it's only the fire siren, the storm siren blows a solid, high-pitched noise for three minutes. That's National Weather Service, that's their laws. The fire whistle goes up and down, up and down for 60 seconds. And that's the fire siren, the up and down is the one we're going to shut down somewhat from 9:00 to 7:00 at night to help some of the community members. We've had a lot of large concern with the nighttime use of it and for why it's being blown.
Mike? Director, do you have the request records?
Yep. For work that's about us?
It's just an ambulance report that a law firm wants a copy of for whatever legal reasons.
What, Mike, want to go through or we can see? Just, I don't know, it's confusing.
If it's an open records request, they'd actually say why? No, they typically don't tell us what.
Matt, pardon?
Nope.
I'm surprised it doesn't happen a lot.
Right. I agree.
Okay. Any other questions for the ambulance service? None? We'll move on to Public Works Utilities. Engineers' report, Russ?
Yes. Good evening. In addition, I was to the core that you have on the public work. And just provide you a quick update from the city engineer regarding the 2021 projects. Third Avenue East with A1, we've been busy putting together construction record drawings based on our field construction observation information, what the contractor gave us. And then our final field survey work, we're, he sent our survey about pick up final quantities and locations of key public work facilities. So provided Matt, tonight, a copy of the Third Avenue East construction as-built record drawings for his review. We're currently doing the same on the Skidsteer Guys project or Dryer Street, Laneville. So we'll probably have those construction record drawings for Matt to review probably within a couple of weeks. As we mentioned before, both projects, we anticipate being closed out in the spring once a few of the minor punchless items are completed. And we have satisfactory grass vegetation. And that's it regarding the project updates. Anyone has any questions at this point?
Any questions on the report? Hearing none, we'll move on to number two, discussion possible action regarding the certificate of substantial completion for the Skidsteer Guide LLC. The paperwork was included in your packet, Russ, if you want to address it?
Yes. Just real quick, this is, as Mayor mentioned, certificate of substantial completion for SSG Skidsteer Guide on the East Laneville and Dryer Street reconstruction project. It's a document that's right in our contract documents and we just wanted to process this certificate of completion with the contractor. So we're in agreement of their substantial completion date that we discussed at previous meetings. The date is established at November 19th, 2021, with the upcoming discussion on liquidated damages. That sets the date. The contractor has signed this document that we sent to him, requested that he approve it, which he has. So that's what you have on the agenda for city council approval. We can have it. That's all with the file. And when upcoming pay requests will be coming in to discuss the liquidated damages that the council may want to impose on the project, the final payment.
I mean, and this was about the date we were expecting?
Yes.
Within a day or so?
Yes. So the contractor's in agreement to that date. So again, as we mentioned, October 1st was the substantial completion date. This established at 19th, November 19th, 50 days.
Have they submitted another repayment request?
Yeah, I'm just going to mention that. Just got it today.
Okay.
So we did get a payment application request today. We're reviewing it. We'll take a look at some quantities again compared to our as-built quantities, get those adjusted or if we need anything. But pay requests will be coming before you at your next council meeting for discussion and regarding the approval of pay requests and subtraction of any liquidated damages.
Okay. You have the document in front of you. Obviously, as it said, it's been agreed to by our engineer and by the contractor. Is there any discussion concerning this? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve this agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the certificate of substantial completion for SSG.
We have a motion, second, to approve the certificate of substantial completion. Is there any more discussion, comments, concerns, questions? Hearing none. I'm going to call for roll call. Roll, please.
Councilmember Raisler?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartung?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember Schofield?
Yes. Next, move on to Public Works Utilities. About the report, Superintendent Gillis?
Yes. We had a water leak on Dryer Street. It was actually Jim Cancelo's rentals. The leak was up behind his, in between his two rentals Saturday night, this last Saturday night to 10:00. We basically shut the water off at the pier stop and then he contacted his leak locating company and a digger got it fixed and we turned the water back on for those properties on Monday afternoon. So that corner was a little slick for a couple of days. There was some standing water there, but it was a result of the leak coming on his property. As the mayor mentioned, we have interviews next Wednesday, January 19th, for the open public works position. We got four total applicants and we will be interviewing all four of them based on their resumes. They all qualify for the interview. So we will be interviewing all four of the applicants next Wednesday. We had a pump mill function at the number three wellhouse, our high-service booster pump. Barriers and seals were out. Took it apart to fix the bearings and seals and found a hole in the impeller. We got that fixed and installed back in. We were able to basically fix the impeller and ceramic coat it to make it work for a few more years. The pumps are obsolete. They do not make parts for them anymore. The bearings and the seals are standard, but the impeller and the internal parts, they don't make anymore. So in the next few budget cycles, we'll probably be starting to budget. It's about $30,000 to upgrade that. So that's why we went with the $4,000 to $5,000 option to basically repair the impeller and ceramic coat it to get it, get us by for a while here. So over the next couple of budget cycles, we're going to have to start replacing some of those pumps as they are.
How many do we have?
We have one high service, two high service pumps. So probably one a year for a couple of years. I mean, what we did will get us.
So how many total pumps do we have?
Well, we have a well that pumps it into filter and a high service pump that pumps it out of the filter. Two wells and two high service pumps. We don't have to.
So what happens, like how long could we go with that? If this fails, how long could it be down?
We were just down for almost 45 days with this failure, running one well for the last 45 days.
And then if that other one quits, we're no water?
We're at no water. Well, we have resources and contact information. You can get a submersible pump in here probably the next day to, you know, to get a makeshift pump in here to get us by. So we have options. It's not like we're going to be completely dead out of water. We'll get pumps in here if we have to for the well side to pump things out. We can pump, and we can pump directly out of the ground and put it in the system and bypass our treatment point too. So it's not like we're not going to have the capabilities of having water. Other than that, it's pretty much status quo for us the last couple of weeks.
Any questions for Public Works and Utilities? Next, move on to discussion possible action regarding payment request number seven from A1 Excavating Incorporated for the amount of $29,470.20 for the Third Avenue East reconstruction project. Was it again included in your packet? Russ, if you would like to address it.
Sure. As Mayor mentioned, it's payment request number seven. Again, it's not final. Pay request, that'll be coming in the spring of the year, probably around May or June. Still holding retainage in the amount of $31,251.39 through the contract till final payment. This process, we hold 2.5% of the total completed to date. Current due, Mayor mentioned, on the agenda is $29,470.20. No recommending approval. If you're looking through the other pages in terms of the unit price contract, you'll notice some of the quantities are a little bit slightly over. There are also some that are under. Some of the overage, if you're wondering in terms of the completed, one of the big ones is we added some additional retaining wall decorative block down near the intersection of the prospect that better fit in with the neighbors graining. And there's some additional concrete driveways and sidewalk, some silk fence and some riprap in terms of the larger additional quantities. That. Open up to any questions, anyone we have regarding pay request number seven from A1 Excavating.
This will read minus the, no. All that's left is retainage and after this one, correct?
Right. Retainage will come with the next one. And again, we're continuing to work with the contractor regarding our measured quantities and their measured quantities. So working back and forth to come up with final quantities. So this doesn't include the final quantity sort of project that will be coming up on the next one.
Hearing number two, we did have a change order to increase, you know, recover some of that EDS and stuff they had on the corners. So that change orders aren't reflecting here.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions concerning paper, request number seven from A1? Hearing none. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I want a motion to approve pay request number seven for. $29,470.
There's a motion, second? We have a motion in second. Is there any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hartung?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Schofield?
Yes.
Councilmember Feder?
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler?
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker?
Yes. Motion's great, too. Okay, let's pay the bells. Yeah, I was going to bring a few minutes aside and then I'll just go right down the list and see if we can. What I'll do with the meetings is I'll probably just go right down the list here once we go ahead and read through the bells here and then see if we can get time set for these.
Mike, did you guys switch to personnel or files?
Not yet.
Not yet?
We will be.
So we're looking at property tax adjustments?
Go ahead.
Property tax adjustments or something? I'm seeing a couple of them.
Those are overpaid.
Overpayment.
They were, they were paid.
Yeah, that's settled.
Like their title company will send them in and they'll have to split either one of the accounts.
Got you.
Okay. I'm going to go right down the list as far as these committees with the calendar. First, I'm going to talk finance, personnel. First, I'm going to talk finance personnel, Schofield, Gillis, and Schneider. What works for that? We want to meet prior to the next meeting on the twenty-sixth? Or do you want, is there something else?
Well, we're going to talk about the Lakeville project, the budgeting for that.
We've got the flag thing to talk about. We've got joint cities to talk about. You know, I mean, an hour is probably, I think, a solid bid.
Twenty-six first?
Twenty-six.
Where are we going to go?
Wherever it's five.
Five?
Uh-huh.
Five? What do you use?
No, I don't know. I mean, that'd be fine.
Four, five?
Four, three, or five?
Well, since we have thousand six thirty, I was just saying, you know.
Well, we're going on the day before.
No, day ahead.
No, day ahead.
Day ahead before.
Okay, five o'clock. Public Welfare. Members Hooker, Schofield, and Raisler. Again, this is about the parks. Probably going to need a little bit of time for the administrator to get the information. The two things to talk about, the dog park idea, and then also to talk about some ideas that were brought forward about building some things in the park and so on and to get the conversation started about that. When we shelter facilities and those types of things. Anybody got a certain what?
February second.
February second?
I'm going to.
How early can we go?
I've got a meeting at five, but it won't last more than a half hour. So five-thirty or after meeting.
Yeah, that's a.
Or we can, if we're done by five, I can do.
Let's run a four and get down to, I don't know. How long is your presentation going to be?
How long do you want it to be?
Ten to fifteen minutes.
Sure.
Max though.
Sure.
Okay. So we can go either way. Let's go for four o'clock?
Four.
This will be on Wednesday the second, four PM. It's going to be a combination, public welfare, parks. Economic development, again, this is one of them, probably a little bit more. Members Schneider, Raisler, and Harton. And again, as we're discussing, the economic development plans with, working with the professional that we have contracted with, as we've done all things together as far as you know.
As far as I know.
Everything is set to go. And as I said, the importance I've talked about before about being proactive about this. Herb, any other idea?
I can do it anytime. Problem that Tuesday, maybe the twenty-fifth? But I'm pretty much wide open, so I don't really imagine.
Twenty-fifth works excellent for me.
Twenty-fifth?
What time do you want to do?
I don't, I'm open. Other than the nine o'clock meeting that I got off.
I am, yeah.
Pretty close.
Two, five PM?
Just two, five?
Yeah.
And the only thing with public safety, do we want to set a time right now or do we want to wait?
If you. Be awake and I'll talk to Scott Bullitt.
Yeah, and let's see what works out and see what else. Of course, obviously, we're going to, the ATV, UTV. Is there anything else that is pressing in the Hillstones part? Chairman Gillis, do you know of anything else?
No, I don't.
Okay, so let's just wait on that one. Okay? So those meetings are all set. We'll give them, we're taking care of. Any other future agenda items anybody would like to discuss? Again, the next regular council meeting, January twenty-sixth, 2022. If not, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Whoa, whoa.
What?
Okay.
Oh, that's where you get approved. We already, let's have a motion to approve the job. Vouchers are second.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Schofield.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Harton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes. Motion's agreed to. The vouchers are approved. And would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So who?
We have a motion in second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post schedule?